Yep, there it goes. A little laggy.
Okay, uh, this is the Enfield Planning Board. It is Wednesday, March eighth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we're calling the meeting at six thirty. Here we are in the Enfield DPW and also on Microsoft Teams. Uh, members present from my left.
Dan Kiteley.
I'm David Frat.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Kurt Cartharts, Hope Minz.
And on Teams.
Linda Jones.
Wow, you're loud. Good. And also other alternative?
Oh, Jim Bonner.
Okay, Jim Bonner. All right. Um. I don't know about Kate. Uh, Tim has emailed and says he's out of town and would not make it back in time. Uh, Rob Taylor is on vacation in Utah.
We live and take vacation?
Yeah, sometime. Seeley, did you sign in? Kate is here. Hi, Kate.
You're up, Kate.
I don't think there's a list.
There's no list. Let's just note for the record that Seeley O'Piero is our public member. Seeley, anything you want to talk about that's not on the agenda?
No.
Okay, I'll give Kate just a second to get her coat off and get her thoughts organized, and then she can give a select board report.
Select board was pretty short. Um, I think points of interest, um, and a butter to the Methodist Hill property came and expressed their interest in possibly acquiring the property from the town and conserving it. Um, the board explained that, you know, the Warren articles go forward to town meeting and encourage them to come and explain their offer at town meeting and attend. And we took a look and approved some additional grant requests going through the federal delegation, and that is pretty much the body of the meeting.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Kate from the select board report?
Don't forget to go vote on Tuesday.
And come to the candidates' meeting tomorrow night.
Right, which is not town-sponsored, but is the candidates running for town and school office, isn't it?
Okay.
How many folks are running for town offices?
I don't know the total number. The list is online, but I know, uh, select board does have there are the two new seats that were created. So there's one one-year seat and there are two three-year seats. There are three folks for those two three-year seats. I believe there's a, a competition for zoning board of adjustment and also for three-year budget committee. Looking for trustee of trust funds. No one signed up. Looking for someone with a financial background. Don't laugh, Dan. There's gotta be someone out there. It's gonna be great at this. Um, and it's a nice team. And then also, um, cemetery trustee.
Okay. Uh, next we have minutes. Um, the agenda says February twenty-second, and I also think we have to do the February eighth because we had tabled that.
Right.
So I suggest we do them in calendar order, which puts us discussing. Oh, this is February twenty-second. Oh, here we go. Puts us discussing the February eighth. Uh, minutes. So, does anyone have any comments? Suggestions?
Well, we still need to change the, uh, where the meeting was.
We do.
Yes, I have it set around an updated version.
Okay.
But I did have that written down from partial review last time.
And we also know on line fourteen that Ed Morris did not attend.
Yep.
And. We had also talked about clarifying line one fifty-two, identifying who they were or what they was. And was there anything else that we needed to talk about on the February eighth meetings before we vote on them?
Well, we only, we only tabled them because Tim had a, that, he didn't think that the minutes basically said what was there, but they said what was there. Just didn't put them across the way he thought it should have said that they were there. I think, I don't think we can change it.
I.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. It is.
Yeah, you can't, you can't look into people's minds.
Okay, Linda has a comment on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the February eighth minutes as corrected.
Motion made by Linda and.
Step seconds. He pointed at me.
And seconded by Brad.
Late today.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, extensions. Okay, let the record show that Linda on Teams voted to accept the minutes as corrected. Uh, next set of minutes are the twenty-second of February. Is there any discussion on these minutes?
I have just one thing. On line two forty-five. Uh. I, I guess I'd like to know if the person supposedly correcting something's last name is Jones, or if that's an error. And someone may be.
That would be Barbara Jones.
Oh, okay.
No relation, I take it.
No.
Unterrified.
Okay.
But I've known her for twenty years.
Please, please say this is Barbara Jones. Are there any other directions, questions, comments?
I make a motion, we accept the minutes as corrected.
Okay, motion made by Dan.
Second.
Seconded by Brad. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions.
Abstained.
Phil abstains because he wasn't here. Okay, getting back to the agenda. Old business. Um. Mapping project. Whitney, there is a PDF that says something like parcel maps. If you could share that screen. Nope.
No.
This looks like.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, um, based, based on our, um, previous meeting and the discussion at our previous meeting, uh, Rob and I took a video projector and projected against I don't remember which wall, I think it was that one, uh, just to get an idea of what the parcels would look like uh, projected at five feet high. And we got a pretty good idea. All the parcel lines, streets, what have you are, um, very legible. Once we started adding anything, for all intents and purposes, it became too cluttered. So Rob and I decided that the parcel map is what we should do and not add any layers. If we need to have layers for discussion purposes, we will probably have the projector available and we can project on the screen and we can add layers that way. Um, after Rob and I determined what we needed, we placed a phone call to, I think it's CIS, whoever does the mapping. Um, Rob spoke to the head of that company who assured us that this was a very simple thing to do. We would have a file in, within the hour. So Rob left for his vacation about four days after that, and I just got a file this morning. Uh, what I did with the file, you guys can see the map here. North is straight up and infield of sort of pillared in a northeast direction. And what I did is I went in and rotated the map so that we could get it to maximum size. And that way, Enfield is basically squared or as square as can be. Um, can you scroll down a little bit on that, Whitney, so we can see the bottom half of it?
Good.
So we've got, um, a scale, which, you know, there's no, no definition of so many inches to a foot or a mile because by the time it's blown up, we're really not gonna know what that scale is. So I took the scale off. Uh, we have all of the legends that were part of the initial map. And as soon as Rob comes back, we can discuss getting it printed on whiteboard material and tacked up on probably the wall behind me.
And offer to do that work. Um, if you want to get it done now, he can do that with you.
I'll talk to him. Thank you. Uh. So that's, that's where we are in terms of, uh, the mapping project. And if anybody has anything, uh, that they want to add uh, or thinks that we're proceeding down the wrong track, that we should do something different, now is the time. Kurt.
Um, well, one of the things I kept bringing up when we were discussing this is having in some kind of sectional thing so that we can focus on sections at a time. Um. Especially for as determining where zoning lines might be possibly be drawn.
I think if we need to do that, which we probably will, we'll be able to project on the whiteboard or the screen. Um, the, the map on the wall is more of a semi-permanent thing that will tell us in, I guess, generalities, well, more than generalities, but it would be, um, a, a good, close approximation of where zoning lines might be. And as we work through it, um, we can erase and change. So I, I think we'll be okay on that because we do have the option of focusing in, uh, when we need to.
So I'm just, so when we are focusing in, say, we just, for example, say Crystal Lake. Um, and we go out so many such x distance. Um, and do either circle or square, whatever, just for mapping purposes. Would be able to, on the computer, if you're just projecting it on the computer, draw a line and save it?
Not on the computer, on the bigger board.
Well, that's what I was.
And then get the next level map down if we need to? Is that what you're saying?
If we need to, um, I, I, I'm thinking that, you know, in the process of looking at a map, we could talk about Crystal Lake or whatever. Um, it could be sketched out on that whiteboard if we had to. But at some point, we would want to transfer whatever we were talking about or thinking about at that meeting onto the larger map. And then, you know, if we have another discussion on that, which I'm sure we would, uh, and we decide this doesn't make sense, we want to change it. Uh, it's a whiteboard, so we can change it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you could inject and make it a section of town really big.
Yeah.
Draw on it with a marker and take a picture just so that you have.
Remember, yeah.
Two copies, right?
Yeah. Different versions, you know, version A, version one.
Somebody comes in and like does some helpful.
Yeah, even, even with this map here, you can take and go, okay, we're at Crystal Lake. You can take and go up it to two hundred and fifty percent. That's gonna, that's even gonna give you a better look at the individual lots.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying, but.
Yeah.
But then somehow have a permanent, when, at least a draft, a permanent draft so that everything doesn't disappear for the next meeting and go, where, where was that line?
Yeah.
That's why, that's why we put it on.
Right, but if I, I was under the impression that what was gonna be put up there was the whole town.
Right.
One map on the whole town.
That's what goes there, yes.
And then you're gonna lose your definition because it's like trying to figure out where you drew the line around Crystal Lake on a hotel, a townwide map. It's gonna be difficult to see, to me, I would think, to be able to transfer.
But you just blew it up here, and I think what we're saying is that you could blow it up here to any degree you want, draw around it, and then take a picture so that you remember.
Right. But while he's saying, then draw it on the.
Yeah, so we, so we have a.
I don't think you'll be able to see unless you're using the roads.
Yeah.
If you use the roads, that'll show up on your whole-size townwide map. But outside of that.
How are the, how are the current boundaries drawn now for the different zones? Is it by road?
No, no, no.
Somebody just took a map.
It meets in bounds.
Yeah.
And, you know, the southwest corner of lot number forty-nine map, too.
Yeah. Some follow road, some follow streams.
I guess, I guess the other side of that, though, is even even that map is going, something like that's going to work. I don't see us adding more than four more zones. Maybe we are, but I don't think so.
Well.
Four more zoning districts.
And downtown village, you know, the, the main street village.
Right.
Cent field center, lakes. Um, and maybe make the Route four a, get rid of the CB and make Route four CB something on its own.
Right.
Um, sort of like combine those two into a one, one.
I guess what I'm saying is something that size would do that. If you have, if you could, you could do it. I mean, you're not gonna mark it on this, obviously, but your final one is gonna be something like this.
Yeah.
You know, it's not gonna be that size because you wasted half of that map on your.
Right, 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 right. I mean, something that size for just Crystal Lake.
For just.
And, and Massoma Lake on a separate, another piece of paper.
Yeah.
Like, I just took a picture just now on, this is a newer iPhone, not the latest, latest one. But you get really great definitions. So if we were worried about, as we take notes, this can easily get the details. So if you guys drew, you'd be able to get it so that we wouldn't lose it, even if we're playing around with that.
With that, you could use a tablet and make a picture, which would be a little bit larger.
Isn't it possible just to save it to the computer? I mean, to a flash drive or something? Draw, do your fill-in draw, or even colored lots.
Yeah.
So everything inside is that color, save it as a file.
Yeah, I think that young does the.
Hire people for those things.
I don't know, I don't know that we have the technology to do it.
Yeah, I mean, like this, I could send up into the town cloud like right, right a second, so that it was in a file as a working document.
Right, I mean, you could take a picture of this, download it to that laptop, and that laptop could mark on it. If you had to.
Yeah, but even just in Word, I mean, just the, the drawing.
That's right, that's what I mean.
It doesn't draw super well. You'd probably be better off with a tablet.
Yeah.
In the newer version, like I drop, scan things for my kid and she can color them with a pen.
Right.
So you could do that if you really, but I think you're better off doing your notes and then just letting somebody, because you have, you have to give a description of it anyways.
Yes.
So.
And what we're doing is not a final thing.
No, no, but just getting shot at.
It, it's just to see how things are gonna fit together.
Yeah.
But I mean, you could, you could do Crystal Lake with this right here.
Yeah.
Of course you could, yeah.
Yep. So you could do that with any section.
Right, right. It's just a matter of saving it. It's saving it for, so you don't start from square one each time we have this discussion.
Right.
So I can save stuff like into the town iCloud, um, and share it over to any other town computer. So I could easily do that and share it with Rob.
Right.
And pull it, he can pull it right onto their main drive. It's not a problem. It's super easy.
Yeah.
Okay, I save all of my stuff into the town drive because I don't want it on mine. This is mine, not the town's. So everything I do goes up into the town, into the cloud.
Yeah, I mean, just from knowing that area, you don't have to have the size of the lots because I'll tell you right now, most of them are about three-quarters of an acre or lots star.
Yep.
Because that, because it was a homeowners association, and the homeowners association said minimum lot size was three-quarters of an acre. And if you look at them, they're pretty much all about the same size.
Right, so when you zoom in there, you get to see the other direction.
I don't know if that keyboard has it, but you might be able to.
Other way.
With your two fingers, like on the Mac. I don't know if it'll allow you.
A little bit, yeah.
Yeah, that's awkward. Oh, it's, yeah, it may not be set up quite right.
Don't worry.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I know. Part of the discussions we're gonna have to have is all those little lots are putting the water, but then the next layer out is obviously larger lots. Now, what the actual size of those lots is, I don't know, but um, do you include the whole lots and just, and just leave it at that, or? Yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, how do we want to do that part?
It's, I, I think when, when we get to discussing, you know, a, a lakeshore zone or whatever it turns out to be, that's when we start diving into those weeds.
But that's gonna be like every line we draw, we're gonna have to come and run into that issue.
Yeah, for sure.
That's why I was talking.
I guess, I guess what I, if, if we can, if we can have around that lake where fifty percent of the lots are now conforming lots, that'd be a good idea.
Right, yeah.
Because right now, looking at that map, other than the ones that say right up by Boys Camp, those are the only ones that are conforming lots today.
Right, right. By today's standards, yeah.
Seeley.
I just, I just want to re, um, add that, um, about land use. That when you're looking at this, you know, looking at any area where the streams are coming in and
Oh, yeah.
That kind of stuff. I think that's important all the way through the town.
Yeah.
You know, because it, you might not be able to put another lot in there, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I don't necessarily think we could be going down and along and go further, right? You could, you don't have to make a big loop around X number feet from the shoreline. You could do the existing
Right.
line-ish so that we're still preserving those bigger lots at the other side. I mean, maybe, or I don't know if those are three or five, what they're in a. Are they three?
Yeah.
A lot of those are steep slopes and.
There's a lot of steep slope there on.
Have them all in three.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, just leaving some of those would be great.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you could stop at where Button Road comes down.
Yeah.
And go do horseshoe.
And I mean, I really don't personally care, like, say, personal here, which probably is bigger than three acres, wanted to sell them to personal here to make them a little bigger. I
Yeah.
I don't want to stop them from making themselves a bigger lot.
When was this map last updated? Do we have a?
Twenty-two, April twenty-two.
So right where you see Button Road.
Yep.
The word road, that is Boys Camp. That, that, that large square is, is the.
It's on the corner of Boys Camp Road and Button.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And then that's over three acres.
That one is, oh, yeah.
Yeah. And then, and then the next one by the brook, I don't know who owns that.
No, I don't.
That's large as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Like, I think that there's some opportunity there. Like, we see people do lot line adjustments to their neighbors occasionally. For them, if they wanted to get along and do something, yeah, certainly would be advantageous to all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we would preserve the shoreline by not making it so that you're making busily more small lots. Because they've got plenty. I mean, at least this is my opinion, is that they have plenty of small lots at this point.
Right, yeah. Yeah, but don't, not letting them subdivide too much, A, and B, we need to be more interested in setback from the water.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
That we are, that we are with side setbacks and setbacks from the road around the lake.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Now, if you scroll the map up a little bit so you can see the.
Towards the dam?
Um, actually, the other way I was thinking. Okay, stop there. Um, so now on, on Gunwin Road, you had all those little lots going around. It's road stops.
Oh, yeah.
Looks like private continues or something.
Yep, it is.
And then, and then there's larger parcels.
Yep.
Appears all as they are. Now, for a zoning line, would you continue, follow a gun, holo-gun, holo-gun, a gunwin road?
Sorry.
Road distance from the water and connected to Putman's Road, or would you?
I think we, no, you wouldn't.
Okay.
No.
Now, you leave that, you, that, for, you really can't develop out there anyways.
It's, that sounds swampy.
It's all swamp. It doesn't show it, but it's all.
But, but it's, I mean, that doesn't show up on this because.
Right.
We only get.
You can't see.
We don't need to be making a more of a small lot zone. We're just. On our.
Okay, now. Politically, we're gonna have gonna have to fight for that.
Fight for what?
For saying, sorry, you can no longer have a hundred square foot lot right on the water.
No, you can't right now. You can have three, three acres.
Yeah, you can have it, but you can't have a new one.
Right. It's already three acres, so that's.
Your grandfather did.
You're gonna do it anyways.
Yeah.
All right. Never mind, my.
No, if we were going.
That's what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we were going the other way, it would be a very, very sad moment for everyone.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion on?
It's gonna be challenging.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah.
At certain points, it's gonna be challenging.
It's gonna be very challenging and.
It's gonna be winners and losers.
I, I, I suggest that we don't put a whole lot of effort into it until we have a professional consultant.
Yeah.
Who has probably been through this before.
Yeah, but, but it's good to go through it and get an idea of where our problems are gonna be and.
Yeah.
For sure.
Right, I mean.
Then there's other issues, too. Can you take the map, um, bring it all the way, go all the way down on Boys Camp, all the way to the end? Okay, now.
Those ones that go like this?
Now, do you make a decision from here to there that you may want to change it because that's all asphalt road? And your, your master plan basically is pushing you towards higher development in areas that have better infrastructure.
That goes to what I was saying last time, where your fifty percent comment and that, like, if we try to just give some rough guiding principles we all roughly agree on.
Right.
To keep our conversations in line, I think you guys.
Would you rather have development on Lockhaven Road or Boys Camp Road? Well, probably Lockhaven because it's an asphalt with the infrastructure. Well, but you know what I mean? But, but. Those could be, that is.
You know, your district may not.
I hope we don't go.
I mean, it's paved, but that's about it. It's still
Exactly.
Distance from service, town services. Um, police, fire, public works.
Right.
Ambulance. I mean, to me, that's more a issue. It's.
So I'm one of very few residents at Enfield that lives in what's considered truly, truly a rural spot. So we're considered remote, and getting insurance for your home is extremely difficult. Um, to the point where when you call most of the major companies, they, as upon looking at your address, immediately hang up on you. Uh, and everybody's.
Just because you're remote?
Because I'm, because, and they have to be willing to map you to the closest mutual aid station, which is Canyon, right? So I, I'm saying, there's a reason our family farm is out there, right? So I, I'm saying, there's a reason our family farm is out there, right? Once upon a time, there were shipbuilders and. The train was closer, right? So going Kenan was a big deal back then. And you took all of your produce and your chickens and what, and you put them on the train to Boston. Now it's different. So it doesn't make as much sense now for people to live out there. Um, I some days wonder why I'm that far out. I mean, it's beautiful, right? But is it a good choice, like, in terms of the environment and preservation? Probably not. But, so I think we're smart to, um, but like George Hill Road's another great example, right? The beginning of George Hill Road has, you know, good pavement, it's a quick access to, you can go up over to the interstate, you can go.
Right.
Down into town and up to DH real fast. So they've got a lot of options.
That they just feel.
Methodist Hills. Oh, no, I mean, Methodist Hill is, and if you look at the people, a lot of the people who live up there. It's because of the proximity to the, you know, if you have a household with multiple working adults. One of you wants to go to Concord and one's gonna go to Montpelier or Burlington or DH, you know, a lot of households split. Um, and there's a reason, like Grafton, New Hampshire is an odd place for people, but they do the same thing, right? One's going to Concord and one goes to Lebanon. So looking at kinda where the job center and why people might be traveling.
Anything else? Okay, let's go on to continuing discussion on guiding principles. And to get into that, I have a little, hopefully fun exercise. Um, can you put up the um PDF? Nope, not that one. The third one, it's always the third choice.
That's not even part of it.
Is it already open? Is it?
Yeah, Lawrence Conway's sign.
Okay. Um, we know that one.
We know that one.
Do you want me to scroll up or was it already?
Uh, yeah.
It is.
That's, that's where we want it.
That's, yeah.
So.
That's in court.
The, this is.
What sign?
What sign, yeah? No.
There, there is, there are, there are two signs. There's a A for A sign. And there's a little s- of, you know, moderate size sign over the door.
Yeah.
And for those of you who haven't been following it, uh, scroll to page one, please.
Yeah. There you go.
A little bit.
The picture.
There you go.
The picture, okay. So the high school art teacher.
Yeah.
Decided to uh have sort of a community art project for his or her students. And somehow they decided that um doing some art. On this building would be really cool. And my personal opinion is, it's really cool.
Yeah.
I like it.
It's public art, right? I mean, that's my, they're, no, they're saying it's a sign.
So the uh, the, the town fathers power.
Yeah.
Pot, um, powers that be said, no. You now have a sign that exceeds the required dimensions.
Well, no, that, that wasn't their issue. Their issue was, you can have this. What you can't have is the donuts and this, because then all of a sudden, it's totally a product. If you don't have the product on it and it was just the rainbow, no problem.
It was this, it was.
It was things.
The wording of their ordinance.
Right.
Right.
It's the interpretation of how the ordinance is worded, just.
So, let's.
That's the fight.
You're advertising your product.
Let's go to the ordinance, if we could, which is the word. The word duck and scroll down to the highlighted part.
Yep.
Which is the section on wall signs and we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and say that the. Uh, original sign, which is not on a wall, which is common to both the interior and exterior.
Right.
Uh, we'll give them the benefit of the doubt and we'll call it a wall sign. And it talks about the message area. And it talks about the height. And it gives you two options depending on the square footage of the business.
Okay.
And I think we could um probably reasonably conclude. That that building is a little bit less than fifty thousand square feet.
Oh, yeah.
Would everybody agree?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So, the question before, at this point, the court. Is. You know, what is considered the sign? The town says it's that whole thing on the top with the donuts and the cakes and whatever. And my personal feeling is that it's still the original sign and they've enhanced it.
Yeah.
But. There's nothing that I could find in their ordinance. Which mirrors what's in our ordinance that says no murals. So, the question, and you know, we can go around the table and people can just sort of make comments. Depend or pretend that you're the ZBA in Conway or the judge. Um, based on your read of their zoning ordinance. Um, have they broken the sign law?
Well, I mean, that only gets into square footage. My understanding, my reading, when I was reading the papers was. It was the, the advertisements portion is what they were arguing over. And saying the s- the sign is an advertising, advertisements.
But the ordinance talks about the message area. How do you define the message area? I, I, I personally would say the message is the written part. On that little oval sign above the door.
Well, I mean, obviously, someone else is interpreting it as, as a visual message.
That's the question.
That's not what it says.
Right.
Well, it doesn't say.
Or did they leave it vague on purpose so they can.
It doesn't say wording, has to be.
That's the problem.
Has to be, we're saying.
That's the problem.
It's very vague.
And, you know, the, the discussion that we had a month ago is should we write our ordinances? With lots of specifics, which was Kirk's contention.
Because of.
Or, or should we do the minimum and leave it open to interpretation? Which is the position that Tim Jennings had, and I'm really sorry that he's not here to, to argue his point. But, um, you know, this, I, I think this is a, a perfect example. Of why you have to be very specific when you craft an ordinance.
Well, and why there is ZBAs and why a lot of stuff goes to court.
Yeah.
Cause if, if you're specific, you could still have someone go to the ZBA.
Oh, of course, of course you do.
No harm, I guess I see it as like, so I personally like public art and murals, and if you had a really good reason to paint a giant. Human and a horse and buggy or something on a building here, go to the ZBA and do the work.
Right, exactly.
Is that, I mean, is that, cause and our, if I understand our process correctly, you can't just do a mural, you would have to go to ZBA?
You would have to get a variance.
A variance, right, which makes sense to me.
Right.
Right, because not everybody should get to paint a mural because you, yeah.
Good, but, but Kate, go to the criteria for a variance.
Mm-hmm.
What's the hardship?
Uh.
There isn't any.
There is none, which means denied. Variance denied.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, okay, right, like, I guess I think mostly of murals on museums, right? Those are the ones that are um, science museums, history museums often have those. Other than that, do you necessarily need a public art mural? So I don't think we're gonna run into that, because I don't think anyone's gonna add the paint to the side of the public block.
No, but I think the point is that if you leave something open and vague. You end up, could end up in court if the person fighting it, right now the guy's fighting it just on principle.
Right.
Everybody else says, fine, just take it down, we're done with it. But the owner says, no, I'm fighting this on principle.
Right.
And he, and he's willing to spend the money.
Is the fence at Lakeview a sign? Is it a mural? I'm not trying to pick a fight. It's, somebody put a lot of time and effort into it, but I think that's something we're gonna have to consider, right? There are gonna be things that are out there, um, that people probably feel strongly about.
Mm-hmm.
And if you don't like your neighbor, can you paint them a pretty picture on the other side of your fence? Cause this is New Hampshire, they might do it.
Well, I mean.
They definitely would.
The wording on ours, I thought it was simply displaying a message.
No, I mean, we, we, we have a, a, a paragraph or whatever that says murals are not allowed.
Right.
Period.
Yeah.
And I, I, I believe that applies to any sign in any district.
And.
And why did they?
Haven't read it since we redid it, so.
Why was that, why was that put in?
Well, I, I, I asked myself that same question when we um.
Probably found someone else's language.
Yeah, I, when we did, we did assign things a couple of years ago, you know, a lot of it was borrowing from other towns.
Mm-hmm.
And just saying, this sounds good and we'll go with this.
I mean, you know, there, there's a great history of West of barn art.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it's, you know, very prevalent in New England, but occasionally.
Thought about painting some art on my barn.
You would, you would need a permit.
There's a lot of, even in the South, there's a lot of murals on buildings.
Yeah.
A lot of, a large number of murals. Um.
You're right. I mean, I suspect for something like a mural, probably would be a special exception rather than a variance.
I agree.
Would be a smarter way of going at it.
So you wouldn't have somebody put something crude out there.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
So, let's, let's see if we can segue into the um, and see if we can reach a definitive. Conclusion on whether we want our ordinances to be vague and open to interpretation. Or be as specific as we can.
I think it's, it's hard to, to write them both ways. It equally is hard to write them vague versus specific, I think. So, I wonder, I think that if you're more specific, you'll probably have less in court.
And that's a big thing for a town because, you know, if somebody takes the town to court, you're probably talking twenty grand.
And the off, the amount of time and pressure it puts on staff where we don't have, you know, an extraordinary. For both bodies that we can just dispense of somebody to court for months at a time.
Mm-hmm. There's been decisions that the zoning board has made.
Absolutely.
Because they knew that if they went the other way, it was gonna go to court.
Yeah. And then there's.
To the point where they basically overruled themselves.
Well, and there's been.
Out on Roland's point.
And there's been decisions that, that, in the courts, in my humble opinion, that. You, you're perplexed with how, how it ended up there, given, given the, the circumstances of the issue, but. Um, you, you're never gonna beat that all the time.
No.
And we've spent some good money to lose in court before.
Yeah.
Like, really lose.
And we spent good money to win in court and then a new zoning board comes in and. Not only did we win in court, but the precedent was an Enfield precedent. That they based it on. And the zoning board then turned around. And when they, when they came in again.
Mm-hmm.
And said, oh, yeah, that's no problem. With basically the same, the same floor plan, with the exception of they changed the porch. But it still was within the setback.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Because they knew it was gonna keep going to court.
Well, it was.
And.
I sat on the ZBA for a while and.
There was a different zoning.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I was always arguing with, with them until they finally threw me off.
Right.
And throw you off.
But that's, but that's New Hampshire. I mean, that's zoning law in New Hampshire. I could read between lines, babe.
No, actually, I could tell you if you really wanna know, um, we felt that having somebody on planning and zoning.
Only get to say.
Same time.
I know that was the reason.
No, that was I, but I'm.
Specifically said it's allowed.
Yeah, I know it's allowed, but I think we have enough people for seats where it keeps us out of hot water. Where they take a quote from a planning board meeting and they try to use it in on your, in a CKA court thing. And that wasn't because anyone did it, it was just abundance of caution. Look, I am very risk adverse on this stuff. Because when the voters are mad about their tax bill.
Right.
Even though I maybe didn't pass it.
They don't remember, so he, they keep the dollars and parts.
They forgot what they voted for the hiring. Happens?
Happens, happens.
But my kid tells me all the time, it's a joke.
You're a kid, you should be.
But, yeah, you know.
So.
I mean, I think, I think we're okay with our mural saying that.
Well, yeah, I, I, but I think it's the bigger, it's the bigger question.
It's the bigger picture though.
How specific do you not get?
That's, that's.
We are gonna know until somebody goes wrong.
But I think that you get as specific as you can, where you have an example that you can point to.
Right.
And you try to cover your bases and end it there.
Yeah.
And not try to write the, the information for stuff that. You don't know might, might happen type of thing.
Right.
Right? If you haven't seen it, like everybody on this board, if you haven't seen it and you don't think it's gonna happen, I think you leave it there, that's where you stop.
Yeah.
And I think you should go back to history and look at all the cases that went to court. And the reason they went to court and then write your zoning regulation to avoid.
And that's why we're gonna hire somebody who knows those things, right?
Right, right.
Yeah, but.
Hang on, okay, right.
Because, I mean, you guys are really much better at this than me, but I think, I feel very comfortable with somebody who has. Actively reviewed these repeatedly, and I know a lot of you guys look at that. Um, I look at our lights on our signs, remember? You know, you, you base your specific rule on the technology of the time.
Yeah.
And then I think we have to just make a better practice of updating for new IFTS, right? So like, we know having a flashing scrolling sign is probably not safe. But maybe having an LED sign is pretty safe.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and good for the environment. So, you know, we're just gonna maybe have to can. As part, and this is probably what the select board, as part of our strategy, is gonna need to talk about across all committees is. What kind of cadence do we have for updates? Where we give ourselves a sanity check and say, is this modern, does it apply, is there new technology that would change this?
Yeah, that's very hard to do, is to revisit stuff, right, on a periodic basis.
That's what the charts are for.
What's the frequency, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then it's money and time and people to do all stuff. Like even the um, the master plan.
Oh.
Right? So.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big effort, the first chunk we did, and it's gonna be a big chunk the next time. And then there'll be a third chunk, and then we need to go back and revisit the first chunk. It's constant to do it right.
Yeah.
Right? It's constant.
But, you know, you're talking perhaps a, a five to ten year.
Five, ten years.
But constant is the key, the keyword.
Yeah, but in the case of the zoning, right, it's a hundred and forty pages. And it's not concepts. It's specific things.
Yeah.
And I think having that practice we talked about with Rob before, where when we run into something that we don't love during a meeting, that we keep a rolling set of notes. So when it comes to the time where we say this is our one-year marker or our five-year marker, we say, oh, we have these twenty things and we say. These are our top priorities to address, these are medium and these are low. And really organizing ourselves so we can maximize what we have for effect. Because I think you guys are really. Like, all of the boards in Enfield have come a long way in terms of development and how we work. And I, I'm, I'm really proud of the work everyone's doing. I think we're getting to be a little more businesslike and organized. Maybe by force, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's like the school board does probably four or five policies every two weeks.
Yeah.
They do about four or five different policies every two weeks and they just, it's in a rotation.
And what you guys don't see is that every time I see a policy or something, I write out a note. So, and it's something that, not to say he has to do it, but to say, hey, I saw this and I noticed that somewhere else ran into it. Just so that it's in the email, so it's constantly rolling, so it's kind of in the fore. Just so that it's in the email, so it's constantly rolling, so it's kind of in the forefront of our mind, or you probably hear me say purchasing policy a lot because. This left board deals a lot with that, but you know, I've recently sent him, hey, should we have a conflict of interest policy or gift policy? Even though New Hampshire law covers it, just so it's a quick reference, maybe, maybe not, but.
Yeah, so, you know, going through two policies a week or whatever, four policies. Going through our master plan every five to ten years is great. But the initial getting together, as in the master plan, is a Herculean effort. And that's, in one sense, that's why we have consultants. Because they, they do this every day.
Well, I think with the, at least in my short experience, there seems to be on most of the boards in town. There's a a passing of the torch in terms of expertise and historical perspective and new people come on. And we need to make sure that we continue to do that with all the board, this, you know, master plan being another example, that that's gotta continue in order to. Have that keep going, you have to pass it down, you know?
Yeah.
Could we? Talk about committing ourselves as a board to on a cycle, like. We all come, we all read one chapter by this, like, say, this section by March and discuss it at the second meeting. I'm just. Bitballing here, but you have the general idea. So we say, we put on a calendar, we do that, and we do a quick revisit. It's not necessarily for rewrite, but it's just to be like, hey, this is what's working, hey, this isn't working, uh, notice this. And then we have those notes. As a board, vis a vis what we've been doing for operations, do we try to get on some kind of breakout calendar like that? Where it becomes an agenda item for.
That that kinda sounds like a good idea. Um. I think it would also serve the purpose of refreshing our minds. As to what's our. What are, you know, a hundred and fifty pages of zoning ordinances saying? And certainly in terms of new members who are. Joining the board and coming up to speed, uh, it would be, I think, a good way for them. To pick, pick up bits and pieces. You know, I I would encourage new members to read everything on their own, but. I I would think that having a discussion about them. Um, and talking about the good parts and the bad parts and what we might want to do to change it. Might be helpful to new members.
Thank you, Reece, a good point there too. So. Well, before I ever became the select board, grabbed to Ben board. Um, when I first joined the select board, I read the whole zoning ordinance, right? But reading it doesn't mean you understand how it applies, because you've never been on that board. So I know just enough that I might remember the keywords, so I can look it up. But you guys have been very kind to me over the last two years, one and a half, two years, uh, when I'm like, whoa, wait, go back. Because I don't understand it or how it applies. Um, and while I might hold up my hand and say that, not every new member might do that, so. It would also maybe give another avenue to give somebody a platform to ask those questions.
Yeah, and just as an aside, I think it would be really great if the Z B A followed the same procedure. In terms of. Their members.
We could, we can invite them to do unified read along.
We are, we are allowed to have joint meetings too. But uh, those have been, I think we've had one since I've been on the board. And I I thought it was productive, but just the the scheduling of. Everybody's schedule and, you know, they're on Tuesdays, we're on Wednesdays twice a month. And um. It's in some cases a lot to ask.
Does Rob, Rob works with them as well?
Rob works.
So he could probably have that conversation with them about whether they, because if they were reading the same. And there was kind of a, say there was a crossover of ideas, or at least all the ideas were booked, you would be in the same.
Yeah. That would be, that would be helpful.
Would be like book clubs in Enfield.
The zoning ordinance.
We can, we can co- collaborate with a library and everyone in town can read with us.
Can we have tea and cookies?
We can do whatever you want.
See Lee?
Yes, I'd just like to add that um. The the Z B A has had a turnover and people a lot faster than any other committee. And he 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 can't, which is interesting because the um, he he just can't go and sit down and try and make. Decisions on all of this, because there's so much information you need to know. And how everything works within everything else and. Um, it's just, it's interesting. My biggest, my biggest complaint has been. It's not an upgrading. There's no, that people don't go to these conferences of these, now you got it on video. And but they're key in in the, on the Z B A, the absolute key to do this. You got to know your case law. And it make it all interesting. The House legislature wanted to. Um, and I don't know if it it's passed or it's still like sitting on a table, who knows? But they want to require Z B A members to. Get, have at least, I don't know, something like four hours of training a year and take a test. So.
That makes a lot of sense.
No, but they won't, they don't, they won't uh.
It's not gonna happen.
Call you for fucking it or you have to go back.
I, so I've had quite a few discussions with Ed personally um. About all committees and not because of one particular person or committee, but just my belief has always been very similar that you should. It shouldn't be, do you wanna go to this training? It should be, which one of these trainings would you like to sign up for? We'll sign you up. And that is what they do for school board. It is very effective. It teaches things like light, right to know law. And it really, and it also gives you a chance to see your peers out in the state of New Hampshire and learn a little from them. So I've attended some of the online seminars uh during COVID and, but I know. It's hard for people because they're already committing a lot of time. I think if we were a little. Our onboarding process as a town, and Ed and I talked about this, could use some improvement, though. Here's your pa-, you know, when you sign your oath of office, here's your packet, here's your staff contact, here's a blurb about what you do. Here's a list of relevant, something of that nature, and which one of these would we like you to sign up for? I don't know if we're gonna get that far, but I've shared my. My my very strongly held feelings on it. Um, certainly if anyone wants to back me up, I'd appreciate it.
I will.
The state has also dropped the ball a lot. There used to be annually. Zoning and planning. State workshop. One Saturday a year in six different locations. Basically, if you wanna go to one now, you gotta go to Concord, you know? We used to have, we, I mean, there used to be one in Grantham.
The law lectures.
The law lectures. You know, and that, you learn a lot. At those, it was only four hours, but you learned a lot.
Yeah.
Because they also had the latest cases. That were affecting zoning and planning.
And to to Kate's point. Doing it online, you lose the personal interaction with your peers. And, you know, I've gone to. Planning, zoning, trainings. For many years now, not in this state.
Right.
Across the river. And. You know, you meet people. You might meet a planning director that you have lunch with, you might meet a Z B A person or a D R B or whatever. Um, if you're lucky, you might get to talk to the judge who just gave a a lecture. Um, and the personal interaction, I think, is equally as important as. The lecture part of it in the slides, because you, you know. You you just get so much from talking to people who have had similar problems or similar things that they've had to. Had to deal with. Kurt, could you put Linda back on the screen?
Probably go in the bed.
One of the things we could do if we have the budget money is invite the guest speaker to come. And speak to a joint session, the planning board, Z B A. And conservation or the other board that was interested. I know Lebanon. Haven't seen it this year, but they were for a lo- a long time, had their town attorney come in. And give a long, long discussion of the last year's past court cases. And described what the case was all about, the outcome, and why it went this way or that way. Um, and something like that, or. And someone from the state O O S P um office to come in and just. Talk to us. Something to that effect.
Kurt, have you ever seen the document called the Federal State Planning and Zoning Case Law for New Hampshire Local Officials? The document, ran across that. I just ran across that. It's it's current as of December two thousand twenty-two. I think that might be helpful. It's the federal and state planning and zoning case law for New Hampshire local officials.
Where did you access that?
Bill, do you wanna send that to Rob to circulate?
I just downloaded it.
Cause Rob could circulate it for us, right?
Looks like it could be. You page a lot, lawyers wrote it. Seventy-nine page.
He would be an interesting speaker. Barry Schuster.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Lebanon's Ronnie Wora does theirs.
And he's, he's very well. He, you know, used to do a lot of the the law.
Yeah.
Law issues.
Yeah.
The planning, zoning lawyers.
And I get the New Hampshire, the New Hampshire Institute of Politics, which is out of St. Anselm. I get their event lists and occasionally I do their participated, and it's not, even though it says Institute of Politics, it's not political in the sense of. Party politics, it's a lot about conceptual ideas, and so you might pick up something there as well. I know I picked up some of my best contacts that I worked with during COVID. Um, many years ago and revived them. When I needed somebody who, cause in Enfield, you know, you're on a select board with right now two other people, so. Learning from, I would say, colleagues across the state who are facing similar issues helps a lot.
Yeah, I mean, for my own personal, cause I'm interested in it, but also educational. Is reading the court cases, or actually not court, the housing appeal. Decisions.
Yeah.
Uh, because they all deal with, I mean, scared towards housing specifically, but it's development, housing development. And they'll go through and explain why the, why they are ruling a certain way. And they'll point to specific facts in the case, saying this is where you messed up, this is where you got it right. This is what you did wrong, this is what they, what they did wrong, um, type of situation. Um, and it's just planning and zoning, a lot of Z B A stuff, but it's all planning and zoning issues.
Yeah.
And they have probably thirty or forty. Um. Opinions right now on their website.
I wonder if it wouldn't be worthwhile to create like an appendice, uh, uh, cause we have our website, I know we're at the beginning, we're done, but. To have links that are helpful resources that board members could check, or if we have like, I don't know, a digest of like. Five links of current, like five current links to just go out, not for discussion amongst the board, but just like, here's five current resources that. Might help you, you know, as you're talking about things that impact Enfield. Uh, it's just a.
That would be helpful.
It would be something, just add it to Rob's, please, since he's not here.
Are they updating the webpage?
You can update the webpage anytime you want, you just gotta find the right person. I bet Rob's allowed to update his own page.
I believe he can, yeah.
Because I know recreation can, um, so I I don't have any trouble getting them updated when I want. Updates, I just have to make sure I found the right person.
Yeah, Rob, Rob would be the person. But he has an awful lot, I just played.
Popular guy.
He is.
Makes the day pass faster.
Okay, um. I thought we were going to have printed copies of the Innovative Land Use book by now. You're laughing.
I read it.
You read it.
I read it.
Online?
It just, well, I I read the chapter. And I looked at our present zoning and it, it was exactly what it said it was going to be. There was a chapter about zoning from the nineties. And zoning in the nineties was based on, you take the town center. And that's where the density is, you just keep rolling further and further away. Doesn't make any difference. What's there? It's you go further and further away with less density.
Is this it?
That's.
That's the one.
So we don't, it, it, so, okay, you know.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's.
Yeah, I understand reading papers, great.
Right, it's online.
Um, I'm getting blind, so I'm just gonna.
I am blind very hard.
And you go further down and the village plan is there. Including a, which I'm going to Fremont next week. I'm gonna check it out because there was a plan back in the nineties. Um, called the Commons in Fremont. I don't know if it was ever built. I'm gonna find out, cause it had the address.
You can buy over it on Google or.
No, I'm gonna actually drive to it on a land. But, you know, and there's, there's six or seven different chapters where you can see changes in how zoning's been done over the last fifty years. And it's kind of, it's an interesting, that's an interesting read.
And I think it's always fair to say that laws, regulations and zoning. In any era are made based on what people know in their current circumstances. Be it COVID, be it plague, I mean, if you really go back and think about it, the the reasoning for things involves, you know, diseases. And the desire to co-locate versus being further apart, so. It's always gonna change, we'll just have to stay up with it.
Yep, tip. Okay. Um. I don't know that we're necessarily ready to. Pick on a innovative land use practice and talk about how we might apply it because.
I hope we can look at page forty-three eventually, starting at page forty-three.
Which is what?
On the innovative.
Conservation.
Yeah.
Because that's one that's gotten a lot of attention here, the village plan, right?
Right.
So I just, that would, I mean, if I was gonna vote. Because I think a lot of what we're gonna be talking about with zoning is why you zone, to protect what you do have.
So shall we make it an assignment that everybody read the chapter, starting on page forty-three? For our first meeting in April.
So which chapter is this?
Planning and book.
Did that link get sent out? Yeah, I think we've got it.
Yeah, I think it's.
The link is there. It was sent out two, a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Whitney, I'm gonna send it to you. Do you have it already?
Is it in the usual planning handbook? I think I might put it in.
Oh, you you could actually get it right online from, uh, which department is it? Must be Office of.
I just sent it to Whitney, she could just.
Yeah, if you could do that and then.
So which chapter you wanna? Did you send it to Seeley?
Forty-three.
Starts on page forty-three. The conservation chapter.
And where, I'm, where do I get this?
Hey, can you send the link to Seeley also when you send the link to us?
Okay.
She will send you the link.
Thank you.
Yeah. It's color, got pictures too.
It's pretty, I like them.
And and if you don't wanna read it online, just ask Rob to print out that chapter for you, he'd be happy to. All right, uh, that's the assignment for our April meeting.
Do we have hearings on uh, the second March meeting?
We do. Um. Can't remember what Rob told me, but there are at least two. So those will be going out on, one of them is an expansion of the. Uh, self-storage on. Uh, self-storage on. What, what is the name of the road? Office at McConnell Road.
Oh.
Lovejoy?
Lovejoy Brook Road.
Lovejoy Brook Road. So there's, um. A pretty big self-storage and warehouse type thing. That's been gradually combined lots and. Uh, the current owners want to put up, I think. Two self-storage buildings or two additional, additional self-storage buildings. And I cannot recall what the other potential hearing is, but that, if that doesn't come to us in two weeks. It'll definitely be on the April topic. Any other? Items for discussion tonight?
Yeah, House Bill forty-four went down in smoke.
It did.
That was the one that said you could put four buildings on your lot if you were on water and sewer. Um, it went down, which somewhat surprised me. Because I figured that everybody up north would vote for it, cause they don't have water or sewer, so it didn't affect them. Yeah, but it actually got shot down by, because people said, well, no, that's home rule, that should be up to town, so. Okay.
Okay, good for home rule.
You know?
We've made our decision to ask our people.
Yeah.
Not with that many lots, obviously, but.
No, no, they were talking about you can put four buildings on your, like, if you're, if you've got a quarter acre lot, if you can fit four buildings on it, you can do it if you're on water and sewer. So that one went down in smoke. There's still another one that hasn't been voted on yet. Oh, it's the one that go up to two eighty U's. Um, so if we're going up to two eighty U's, I know, if this passes, and we're doing the two eighty U's, then. We're just gonna be what the state law is.
We're a leader in the pack.
We're a leader in the pack. If it doesn't pass, then there's those. We're gonna be the same.
We're gonna be in the same.
We're gonna be two eighty U's anyways, so.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing us up to date on that.
Yep.
Uh, anything else? Next meeting, March twenty-second. There will be hearings. Candidates forum tomorrow night at seven. They need audience members.
I suspect nobody knows, cause nobody knows about the meeting.
And, uh.
Johnson Property tomorrow night?
Yeah, some of you guys are gonna be coming in hot from Johnson Property if you're.
What time are you?
Because Johnson Property's five thirty to six thirty, so we usually get out in a, in a, in an hour.
You do, okay.
Yeah.
We'll have a half hour with the dinner, that's right.
There you go, slice of pizza.
Exactly.
Stop the jigs.
It's the fastest way.
It's the only way.
All right.
All right.
Um.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Good, I was waiting for that. Motion made and seconded all affairs for adjourning. Aye.
Aye.
Extensions, we are adjourned at seven forty-three. Thank you, people.
See you later. How long you been, how long you staying?
Down there.
Oh, another month or so. And, and it isn't in the eighties. This week it's only in the seventies. Hey, and for all you bikers, this is Bike Week in Daytona. Vroom, vroom.